This is the traffic mitigation. I am requesting this because it is an existing lot. We're not proposing any additional lots that would create additional traffic and whatnot. But you're not imposing traffic mitigation fees. With that being said, I ask you to approve the section. Thank you.
Questions from board?
So the easement goes over your neighbor's property?
It's a thin strip, it's a thirty-foot strip of land that is not near the neighbor's house. They're down on Shepherd's Hollow, quite a ways away. It's kind of an odd-shaped lot. The thirty-foot strip is going across their house, quite a distance away.
Yeah, I know Shepherd's Hollow.
Is the other property owner still here?
No.
There's already a road that goes up there. Is there a house up there now?
There's no house up there now.
And, um, very small one, that tree in the lower corner on the plant says one UAL.
Yes, and I-
And a UAL on the plant list.
No, I realize that that was left off. It's a Liberty Elm.
Okay.
Yeah, I've got an updated set of plans I can leave with Carolyn that, yeah, has been updated.
Is that the one where your arrow is right now?
This one here, yes. Yep.
While you're on that, um, you know, something for the board to consider, um, this project also needs to go through central business architecture review, um, for design. But I think, um, you know, in central business, we allow lot line to lot line build out. So I don't know if it's worth the planning board to consider, you know, allowing the building to come all the way, be extended all the way to the edge of the property line if the applicant chose, without coming back to you all for review, because it needs central business architecture review anyway. I don't know. I think just, so, you know, once this plan is approved, if they did want to make any modifications, it would be another permit to move that. So they haven't indicated that they're going to do that, but you might just, um, think about having that as an allowance within the permit, um, if that makes sense. In lieu of a tree, you can put, expand the building.
Do we have to make that a condition, or they could do that anyway?
Well, I think you, it would be a condition, but it could be noted in the permit, so they wouldn't have to come back to you all to get approval for that, um, change. Because if they decided to not put the tree there and expand the building, I think that might in and of itself trigger coming back to you.
I'm sorry, I don't know.
Next to that is the brown building that's the insurance. Like, what is the lot line again?
There's a driveway right there.
Right. Right now, there's a, there's a double wide curb cut, essentially, that, um, let me go back to the addition.
Why do you think that's something we should put in? I mean-
So, right now, there's a curb cut essentially from this, where the cursor is now, out to, you know, roughly about here. It's a single wide-
Right about where your arrow is. What business is that?
It's the Wayland Insurance Building.
Right, okay.
Why wouldn't we want them to put a tree in there? I don't understand.
Well, this is the central business district, and if you want ultimately to build out and have continuous facades along the street, then, um, you know, but that would, a building up to the property line would allow for that. And they may not build it anyway, but it's just another incentive, so you don't have to go through one more step.
Well, a couple hundred feet of parking lot right next to the other side.
Maybe not in the future.
Right.
Yeah.
Not exactly a building. Not a continuous building.
No, but you know how these go.
Yeah, yeah.
Other questions from the board?
Um, yes. It says that it's a mixed, the second building is a mixed-use four-story building, but I thought I heard you say it was a retail on the ground floor and then four stories above it. So is it four or five?
Four stories above it.
Five.
Stories above it.
Depending on, uh, we're in the process of trying to ascertain whether, um, it falls within the limits, so as to allow that, and that's the reason we make the specific exit or calculations to consider.
If you have a central business, they don't supply, they don't supply parking, even if it's five stories, it's not going to alter the parking requirements for the site.
I missed it. Have they given us a height in feet?
It would be sixty-five or seventy-three.
Other questions?
Um, just a curiosity. It's an odd lot to have so much parking behind it. I've never noticed that much until I went and looked at it, you know, based on this. What was, was that ever viably used behind the building there?
Not, not to the extent that you'd think for the size of the lot, and that's one of the reasons that the number that you see reflected here is not that much different at all. In fact, I think it's a slight increase over what was previously said. Cypher parking. There's, there are times, actually, I have an arrangement with the church where, uh, on days during the week when they make use of it for, for funerals and so forth, they sometimes will spill over. And we, and in addition on the weekends, uh, prior to the parking lot being built, they, we had an arrangement to allow them to park there as well. But really, you're right, it's, it's been a larger parking lot than most people expect. And as a consequence of that, there's plenty of room for the building, and the ability to make use of the building in the way that we're anticipating is compatible with the parking.
Well, and that question was kind of setting up the question about the link between you and the church. I can see where the church thinks that's a fine idea on Sundays when, you know, the bank is not engaged in business. And so I was wondering what you thought you got out of that link.
We have, we're in the midst of, of, uh, working out an arrangement with the church, which includes, with the easements that we are awaiting from the city, vis a vis their, their negotiations with Mass Electric, all of which will be combined into an easement agreement, which will address the mutuality of the advantage of parking with both properties.
And the last question I had was about snow. We have to, we have to truck it off. You don't really, you've used all the lot, so is there-
Right. I mean, we've got, we do have some abilities to store snow here. There's a little bit of room in the island and, you know, some of the other, but if, yeah, in excess, you know, excess.
The church gets all the snow.
Maybe. Well, I just, I'm, I'm, I'm happy we're moving the business that's there back up to the street. That's a great plan. You know, I mean, I, there's, there's not much to not like here.
You're disappointed.
I don't know.
I have a question about the, um, the rates for the apartment, how it's going to compare to market rates for apartments. Are it going to be lower or in the same thing, high end?
We're watching that very carefully. You know, a lot of that has to do with some of our recent developments with O'Callaghan and so forth. I'm not quite sure that it's going to be apartments for condos. And, uh, there's been, uh, a market, there's been difficulty determining market patterns in recent years. So as we continue to assess that, we're going to make a determination. But I would, I would not suggest to you that they're, it would be considered the most affordable apartments in Northampton, if that's your question.
Right. So they will not be affordable.
They're not intended to be affordable. And, but some people may feel that they're affordable, but I don't-
By somebody, they'll be affordable.
I hope they do feel that they're affordable.
Other questions from the board before we open up? Okay. Um, open up to the public. Anyone from the public wish to speak on this project? No? All right. For discussion.
No, well, let's- Discuss it first. Somebody might want to mouth it.
Yeah. If the applicant has any comments on the conditions.
Question the applicant.
Do you want to go with the gentleman?
Uh, sure. So the conditions I think that we've been looking at are, um, uh, prior to the building permit, revised plans shall be submitted showing bike racks, which you had talked about already, capable of storing ten bicycles and distributed between the bank building and the rear office residential building. Uh, lighting plans, not including five-foot candles on site, so that would be a condition, that they would be at five.
And what about at the property line? Are you okay with a little bit of spillo or if you want zero? Because they were suggesting that it would be about point six.
I think we ought to hold them to the ordinance.
Other folks want to weigh in on that?
Yeah, I mean, it's kind of, yeah, we, I don't think we waive it very often. We've had this discussion with other projects on King Street.
Right. And they're so close, it sounds like it's workable to get within the-
Right. My hope is that you get it to the five.
With the five.
Uh, public access easement for the bike path shall be recorded after review by Office of Planning and Development. Uh, and any conditions that might be recommended by the DPW. It sounds like you've already heard back from them.
We did.
Yeah. And I couldn't go over those. I sort of converted some of those comments and conditions. They are technical in nature, but some of them, they did have a concern, incidentally, about the, the biggest probably technical concern was about the intersection of the bike path with the sidewalk.
Yep.
And I had talked to Jeff earlier this afternoon about potentially adding a sign for the cyclist to say, you know, dismount here, or something other than the stop sign, so that it's clear that if you're coming from, you need to get off if you're going to be on the sidewalk. Um, I don't know how the board, if the board feels that would be appropriate. Um, it's just another sort of cautionary, um, stance to take, because it just, everything's coming together there. Pedestrians going north, south, and, and driveway access and everything. Um, and so, but anyway, so that kind of addressed some of DPW's comments, and Dave Valetta was, felt comfortable with adding something like that, because that was sort of a flag for them. Um, revised construction plan, standby, PE should be submitted for DPW to review at least two weeks prior to the bidding, um, with details called out. Existing utilities in King Street and site connections to them should be revised, um, and included in those plans. If the property is converted to a condominium ownership, DPW would require the master deed to be reviewed, they would want to review it, um, to ensure that repair of the water lines that are shown on site, um, are adequately addressed. And they want to leave that open for them to be able to comment on the, um, language. Fire branch for each building requires a double check valve, um, in, um, compliance with DPW standards. The plans, um, identify cutting and capping of the water lines. This should be coordinated with DPW. And the drain line, um, has to be, um, a minimum of two feet horizontal clearance from the sewer manhole. And if the existing drain line is abandoned, it should be plugged with bricks and mortar. Um, and then finally, um, a couple more, actually. Um, there's a low point in the, in the rear at the bike path connection, and the grading should be refined to, with spot grades to ensure that water doesn't pond in that connection at the bike path. Utility trenches in King Street should be backfilled with controlled density fill in accordance with DPW standards. And then there was a question that I think I, that they flagged, but I think is important, about whether or not the utilities, electric utilities are going to be overhead or underground. And so, um, if they're underground and they come up with a utility box, I think it's important not to be on the sidewalk. Um, we've had some projects in central business where the utility box is right there at the sidewalk instead of behind the building. So, um, I think that's something that you'll probably want to find out, and then convert that to a condition if necessary.
Do you want to speak to that, or you don't?
I think at this point, we don't, we're not really sure how it's going to get brought in yet. You know, we haven't had the discussions with the electric company yet to figure out, you know, how, how they want to approach it. Um, and just loads and whatnot for the building are a little bit undetermined at this point. Um, but we're certainly happy to, you know, come back to the board if, if it'd be, or go through, um, you know, the planning office with the proposal once we know, um, you know, what we're going to do.
Well, if we condition it today, would that take care of it either way?
Yeah. So I don't know if on, in this section, I think everything is overhead. Is that right? It's not underground? Yeah, I think it's only on Main Street that it's, yeah. Um, so I think maybe the condition is, is any utility boxes need to be set back behind the buildings.
Could you clarify where the connection between the bike path connector and the Catholic Church parking lot is?
There's a small sidewalk section directly opposite the main entrance to this building up here.
Okay.
And on, and on the, as I said, the sidewalk from the bike path runs the length of the parking lot.
Correct.
Is anything going to separate the two other than a curb?
Um, currently, no. I mean, right, right now, it's shown to be a, you know, a regular six-inch curb like you'd see any other sidewalk. Um, you know-
I was thinking about, there could be a lot of traffic moving between the drive-in, the parking lot, the rear building. I'm just, you know, as a parent, I'm thinking about children riding bicycles and walking, and, I mean, they could be really close to traffic right there.
Sure. Yeah, I mean, we obviously, it's a, it's a long, narrow site, and we tried to, you know, we separated it to the extent that we could. You know, it doesn't cross any vehicle, um, you know, any vehicle traffic aside from that entrance if they're going south on King Street. Um, but we really don't have the room on the site to put a, you know, a green, you know, grass belt or anything else in there, really, that would be-
Jeff, is it, is it horizontally separated? Are you a sidewalk?
It's vertically separated. There's a, there's a vertical six-inch.
Sorry, yes, right. Because that would keep it, one of the things I was thinking about is if you needed parking, you'd start parallel parking illegally along there, but that, that helps it at the sidewalk.
Probably strike that term if you were, if you identified it.
For the board discussion, if someone had any questions?
So is the building scaled so that we can get a two-story building out of the bank building eventual?
The bank building needs to require, we talked about that. It's, you know-
I'm being impolite.
Yeah, well, and actually, you know, we do. And it's, uh, it's impossible. And although, you know, banks are happy to have neighbors of pub, though. And, uh, so that does present somewhat of a challenge. You know, listen, I mean, it's certainly something that we've considered.
Move to closed public hearing?
Second.
Other discussion, or anyone have any questions?
The only thing I'd like to discuss is Carolyn's idea of, you know, that if the, if the central business architecture review doesn't want to treat it, it's the consistency of, you know, lot edge to lot edge, could we, I'm okay with that. I, I think, right now, it's, it's a sort of a moot point, because it's a, it's the edge of the lot to a driveway. But, I mean, eventually, we would love to think that that might all fill in pretty tight along that streetscape.
Yeah, let me be clear. I don't think Central Business Architecture Committee is going to say, we don't like this project, you need to make it bigger. But I think that if the applicant felt like they wanted to tweak some things and make it bigger, then I wouldn't want to have an impediment for them to do that by coming, forcing them to come back to the board.
Or they could move the building over to the edge of the lot.
Don't they already have the right to do that?
Well, no, they're in site plan. So once you make a change to site plan, so you have a tree there, and then all of a sudden, you say, oh, no, I want to move the building. It does, I mean, there is a level where it could be administrative review, but there's also another level, well, maybe it's not quite administrative review.
Let me ask the question differently. If they came at this stage and had the building all the way to the lot line-
Right.
They could, and we approved that, then-
Yes, exactly.
Right, so they, they could have done that if they had requested that now.
Right.
So I, I don't see not allowing that as an option if they need to.
I thought you meant that sometime in the future, they would want to build the building out further.
Yeah, I meant more that in the interim, if they decide to change plans.
Okay.
I don't imagine that.
Yeah, just going to lose a big tree, that's all.
Well, in the scope of what happened to the church next door, it seems like minor collateral damage.
Pushback, actually, you seem to be interested to know has been-
Sorry, we've closed, we've closed. That's good.
Yeah, I mean, I guess, I mean, the intention, it's, you know, the height is thirty feet, even though it's a single story. But, you know, looking at the elevations, you know, it looks like a bank. And, you know, we're getting a lot of what we want downtown, replacing something curb cut, big, huge curb cut. I don't think you ever try to ride your bike or walk by that. It's a little scary. Um, great place to do U-turn, though.
Really?
Oh, yeah. But, um, so I think, you know, the, the really impact will be loss of one tree, to still get us where we want to be downtown anyway. You know, built to the lot line, you know, facade of the street, so I guess I'm okay with it.
So do you need a, do you need that added to, or you don't, you don't want to add that to?
Well, I think if every, I think if you could just make a statement, I would incorporate it into the permit, saying this permit allows for expansion of facade without having to come back, or something like that.
As long as it doesn't significantly alter the rest of the site.
Right.
Yeah.
That would be helpful. Yeah.
Bill?
Yeah, oh, we want the most-
Yeah, I made the last one. You gotta do this one, Steve.
Um, I move that we grant the request by Patrick Goggins for site plan, major project, special permit for drive-through for construction of two new buildings at seventy-nine King Street, or getting FID twenty-one B dash two-one-six, with the conditions as stated. And do you want the added statement that the planning board's okay if the building is extended to the lot line, without some impact?
Second.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks.
This is, this is going to be the fun one, but I don't see a lot of neighbors.
He's on duty.
He's working in the, in the shadows. I saw his face a couple times.
Right.
Which one is this? This is the-
Under here?
Are you texting?
Yeah.
Okay.
Oh, okay.
So I did get, I just had too much stuff.
We're just waiting for the charity firm to spend.
Notes itself. Don't send so much to Don.
Yeah. Smaller bodies, I think.
Yeah, I came back in last night after being gone, and I thought, God, I've got to go through. It's daunting when you get into the room.
Don't you love lighting plants?
I see a point one.
I'll give it up. Like, like they can tell from, from the calculation.
Well, they covered it up with a lot line, so.
Yeah. You know, the thing that bothers me about this is that when I look at this lot, I can't envision this big a thing next to it.
Well, no, no, if you go over there and look at it.
You coming?
I mean, I went all the way up around to the top and looked back down at it.
It's a, it's a big lot. But it's also a big building. I mean, you have to look at the-
Yeah.
Keep us moving.
Right, right.
Can't hear you.
Okay, we're going to go ahead and start our eight fifteen hearing, a request by Mansur Galibov, uh, for a special permit to construct a hundred-and-eight room hotel at one fifteen Con Street, North Hampton, MAF ID thirty-nine A dash thirty-four.
Can I have a question? Does this mean that Mark can't go on?
I mean, he'll catch up.
Why don't we just wait?
Start when you're ready.
All right. All right. I'm Michael Lee with the Brookshire Design Group, Mansur Galibov. The applicant is here, and our design engineer, Eric Malley, is here to answer any technical questions about drainage or the site. Um, the proposal is for a, they're building in Suites by Marriott. Um, this chain has recently, you know, undergone some design. This artist's rendering is, you know, shows what a typical building, hotel building looks like, four-story, hundred-and-eight-room hotel with the indoor pool. Um-
That's beautiful, yeah.
In this aerial photo, this, this is the site, the site next to the Gazette building. Uh, you can see its proximity, obviously, you're aware of the proximity to, um, you know, exit nineteen ramp here. This is Pleasant Street and Con Street intersection. So this area, you know, is a, is a, um, kind of a gateway into North Hampton, if you will. A lot of commercial development, some residential, um, between Con Street and Pleasant Street here. And then Con Street is, as you know, is a mix of commercial and residential. This image shows a little bit closer view of that, um, area. Um, the site is approximately, I think it's two-point-four acres or so, um, most of which will be, um, developed for this project. The project will utilize the existing curb cut on Con Street here, um, and the existing driveway is going to, would, would be rebuilt and shared as a, uh, entrance to the hotel project, which is proposed to be here, and for the Gazette, um, delivery, uh, there is a large truck delivery for papers and, and picking up newspapers, um, which occurs back here in the loading area for the Gazette building. There's just some views from Con Street of the site, looking into the site. I'm sure you're all very familiar with, uh, the site, going with that. Um, in this color-rendered site plan, it shows, uh, the proposal. This is the building, the hundred-and-eight-room, four-story hotel building, with the arrival chair here. This is the reconstructed driveway that serves the hotel, as well as the Gazette, uh, loading, uh, needs with the truck turn around here. They usually come in and do this movement, and then kind of back up into, um, the loading bay. I think there's two, two loading bays in that, in that area. The parking is dispersed around the hotel. Um, there's a total of a hundred-and-nine parking spaces, one per room plus one extra space, uh, as prescribed by zoning. Um, an easement, mutually agreed-upon easement between Mr. Galibov and, and the Gazette business, um, has, they've been under discussion, and they're both able to, having, uh, Mr. Galibov purchased this parcel, which is outlined in the red, um, and provided an easement, access easement back to the Gazette. And, uh, Mr. Galibov would also get this easement here to, um, be able to use, um, some of the Gazette property for six additional parking spaces. It was, uh, very difficult to, you know, get the parking in the typical hotel model, where you've got, you know, the parking right around the building and, and good access. Uh, we, because of the, um, tightness of the site, if you will, with the quality in, um, hotel to the south, it was, we were unable to get, um, you know, a double-loaded parking bay here, so some of the parking had to go in this area, which is actually in front of the Gazette building. So this is, I guess you could call this like a custom-designed parcel for the hotel, um, as it fits in, um, but it still implies a zoning. Um, the grading and drainage would occur in such a way that we're going to use, right, currently, as you might know, the, the site is kind of a depression. Stormwater kind of collects there, and it doesn't really leave the site. But we do have some very good soils in this area. And the Gazette driveway currently uses infiltration galleys in the driveway, as well as a large underground infiltration bed in the grass area here. There's goods, um, there's good soils there. In fact, I've always, since, you know, we've kind of started this, I've always looked, every time I go by the site, I've even walked there a couple of times. Um, and just to see, you know, after raining, like, you know, is it wet there? But it seems like the site does drain. We've had, um, a geotechnical engineer perform soil borings for Mr. Galibov for the building. While they were out there, they did some tests and, um, sampled the, um, subsoil and found that it is a good draining material. So we're collecting the water basically on-site through catch basins and, um, diverting it to underground infiltration beds. These beds are designed so that they can hold the water. If, in a large storm event, these galleys fill up, there's an overhead, um, an emergency overflow system that connects back out to the street, to a manhole here at the intersection of Wright Avenue and Con Street. Um, we've gone over this plan with Doug McDonald and, um, the city engineers. Um, and, um, they don't, you know, they don't have, um, any real issues with that. In fact, we received a stormwater permit this afternoon from Doug McDonald. We've also got some initial, or review comments from Dave Valetta, Assistant City Engineer. They're more of a kind of technical, they're, they have technical nature, having to do with, you know, how to set up the water mains and where they'd like to see valves and that sort of thing. Again, if you have any specific questions, we can go over those, but, um, you know, I don't want to get into any of the technical stuff here if we don't have to. Uh, there's going to be landscaping throughout the site. Um, one of the things that I did want to touch on was, um, this driveway- One of the things that I did want to touch on was this driveway here. The plan that was submitted, in fact, it was a revised plan. We added a concrete paving in driveway in trying to follow the recommendations that the city has with respect to providing pedestrian-oriented spaces at the street. And I want to kind of talk about that because this is really the side of the building that fronts the street. It's not really an appropriate place to invite people to kind of like congregate due to security reasons and so forth. We had put, we had talked about this with Carolyn and Mansour, had agreed to provide some different pavement there rather than the asphalt. But if the board would expand the idea of basically exchanging this concrete paving for perhaps some benches or additional landscaping in this green strip between this, where's my cursor, between the sidewalk and driveway, I think Mr. Galibov would prefer to do something like that rather than spend the money on, you know, the reinforced concrete pavement here, which, I don't know, it doesn't really seem to serve any purpose. So that's one thing we'd like to bring up and have you discuss. But all in all, I think that this project obviously would be a vital piece to add to that part of Pleasant Street, Con Street. And I hope that the board will look favorably on this. And if you have any other questions, we'd be happy to.
So your planting plan is to have grass around the sign and around where all the trees are? Is it grass that's gonna be there or is it?
Yes. Basically, I guess what's shown here is like this light green area. All this light green area would be grass, lawn. Around the sign, there's gonna be, we've indicated some shrubs and a hatched area, which would be like a flower, you know, planting bed of some sort. So I think that that, the sign would be dressed up in that way versus being, you know, like grass right up to the sign.
And just to stay on the theme of the planting plan before we get into the driveway between the building and the street. So the, one of the staff recommendations is you have pear trees all along Con Street, and those aren't on our planning list. So what would you substitute those with?
Well, I was trying to get something there that would be, you know, that would have some flower and characteristics. I think we could find, we could do some type of hybrid dogwood or something. I think we want to add some, something.
But I think you should, we have the tree committee has their standard list, so you should be looking, take, look at.
It's online in our regs.
Okay. Because, yeah, so you're gonna have to show that. But the other thing, I thought it was a street tree every 30 feet.
Is the average.
The average. And so, for example, the two at the top, that's about a hundred-foot wide swath with only two trees in it.
Two, oh, up here.
Yeah, and there should be, I mean, my guess is there should be at least three, if not four, there. And then along the bottom, you have, I think you have the same thing. You have two, four, six along what's probably about a 400-foot swath. And really, there should be closer to 10. So I'd like to see every, is it 30 feet or 20? I can't remember.
It's 30 in this district.
You have to average one street tree per 30 foot of frontage. So I think you're, you're gonna have to show the plans, trees from our list, and many more trees along that stretch.
Four more.
Well, there's two, four, six, eight on at least 500 feet of frontage. So my thought would be there'd be, yeah, at least seven to eight more.
I'll just double-check this, Dan, what the separation is.
Other questions from the board?
What was the thought process with that stamped concrete, you know, between the building and the sidewalk? I remember discussing it in the tech review, but.
Yeah, I mean, it acts as, it feels more like a plaza, so more of a pedestrian space instead of just an asphalt driveway for a car, you know, a car-focused driveway, so that you're not sandwiched between two roads, essentially. And it would act as a visual cue. And if it's textured, then it's also, you feel it when you're driving over it. So it's not a zip, it's not intended to be a zip around for cars. And that cars really slow down so that in that space along the sidewalk, it doesn't feel like you're sandwiched between two really fast throughways.
I'm just exploring this idea, but I don't, I don't know that that's gonna feel a whole lot safer. I'm just, I'm thinking I might rather have just an honest pedestrian crosswalk from, you know, there's a door on the end there.
There's a door on the end, yeah.
Or to the sidewalk.
That around, that's around the building.
Could make it a raised crosswalk.
Well, it's a question, why is it there in the first place? Why do you need a driveway, well, why do you need a travel lane on that side of the building?
Well, we had discussed this, and actually in the tech review it was brought up, well, same issue was brought up, and we went back and looked at it. But it's a Marriott standard, that circulation be allowed to happen around the building. And it's, you know, it's for the convenience of the customers. Because if somebody comes into the site and, let's say, come in and do a drop-off here and then kind of come in and drive this way and find that there's no parking, then they've got to kind of like try to back out and it's not a safe movement this way. I mean, we've actually, Marriott Standard is for 24-foot-wide drives, two-way drives. And we went and, you know, I mean, we reduced this to 18 feet. And I think that that's justifiably a good reason to scale down the width of the drive. It can still be two-way because it's really not gonna be, it's not like it's carrying a lot of traffic, you know, back and forth. But also, in this case, if somebody were to go around and come out this way and end up all the way in the rear here, I mean, we could put a turnaround in the back, but essentially you have to turn around and negotiate your way back out. So this driveway serves as a convenience for the customers to be able to circulate around the facility to find their way.
I guess, thinking back, you know, we just rezoned King Street. And I don't think this would have, we couldn't build this on King Street because of the way it's laid out. The buffer between the sidewalk and that driveway is only 20 feet. So a building on Con Street.
This is a different district.
That could not be built on King Street. It seems odd to me.
It's a different district, isn't it?
Yeah, but King Street is the more, is the highway district, one where you want, you know, your standards are the least. This is not a highway district. There's residential on that street. There's, there's a very mixed use on that street. That's what I, I struggle with. Small, it makes the buffer from the sidewalk to the property smaller. It's less than 20 feet, I think, to have that traveling.
Yeah, it's 14.
It's 14 feet. So that's, I mean, something, you know, where you think of King Street as being the most densely urban highway district. Why struggle with this?
Can that lane be used by emergency vehicles or is it too narrow?
They could use it. I think that what would happen most likely is that some vehicles might end up driving, like for instance, and cutting over that curb. But they can, emergency vehicles can get around here except for the largest ones. The five, not the chief.
Deputy chief.
Deputy chief did indicate to us that it's highly unlikely that they would bring a fire vehicle apparatus down the back here. That they would most likely access the building from the front sides and from Con Street.
One thing about those curb cuts is they do serve to slow down any of, I mean, that, you know, by having to take that tight turn slows down the traffic going along the side road there. You can't make a sweeping big turn there.
And it is a narrower, you know, drive. So that would also help to encourage people not to speed.
Because I don't understand the stamped concrete either. I don't, I just am having a hard time envisioning pedestrians coming out the side door and going to the sidewalk there. I just, I don't, I don't know why you would, yeah, sort of.
I could see myself, if I were in town and I'd been in the car all day, I could, I could go out that side and walk into town. I mean, it's, it's eminently walkable into town from there.
Yeah, I just think you'd use the sidewalks at the front, but.
Well, I guess that's why I was wondering about a raised sidewalk that connects to that front sidewalk might be more practical than the patio-esque thing that I can't really see using as a patio.
Yeah, I like the idea of a raised sidewalk.
Which slows traffic down too.
Yeah.
Yep.
I'm bothered by just paving over the whole lot. I mean, I walk this, I'm not sure that it's the dry lot you think it is. I mean, I walk the top bridge around the back of that pretty regularly. And, you know, it's got a lot of capability to drain right now because it's mostly grass. And what I'm looking at is almost entirely covered. I mean, if it were, if this were a residential lot, you couldn't cover it to this degree. So I'm just, I know that's not an issue with this, but I mean, I'm just, I'm reacting to the fact that it is completely paved over.
Well, A, it's allowed and B, they got a stormwater permit.
There you go.
Do we want to finish with questions and then open it to public and then have a discussion? That's, that's fine. I just think it might make more sense. Any other questions that the board has right now? Let's open up to public comments. Please state your name and your address. Thank you.
Hi, I'm Shane McGuire. I manage the Quality Inn and Suites on 117 Con Street. Our concerns with this project right next door is number one, traffic. As you guys know, that corridor for Pleasant Street onto Con Street is an absolute nightmare. I can look at my office and, over the past three months, and name at least three accidents there. Rear-ending, you know, there's no traffic light for these other additional guests to be coming onto that street. And the road itself is a narrow, you know, single-lane road. That's one of our concerns. Another concern that we have is if you look at their map, and I don't know the dimensions, maybe you guys can help me with this. The back lot that is right next to the Quality Inn, what's the distance between their driving lot and the back of our building? Do you, do you know that? And the reason I say this is, you guys kind of addressed the zip-around traffic. And I don't know what their interior layout will be of their building, but most new properties, their guestrooms are on the upper floors with the public spaces on the lower floor. So when they, you know, park in front of their building, they're not affecting guests. Whereas on our building, guests are on that first floor that entire length, so.
Carolyn's figuring out the dimension for you right now.
And with, you know, with traffic whipping around there, if that ends up being the case, that noise is gonna go right into guestrooms from our property.
Well, it's, it's, especially it's shown out on, it's detailed out at six feet.
Six feet to the property line. It looks like it's a comparable, set back two from the other building.
So 12 feet.
From where it bumps out, it's six and a half, six feet, yeah.
Anything else for us?
And I don't know if this goes to the planning board or not, but I do, I was curious as to, if there's been any research into adding an additional 108 rooms to the North Hampton market for lodging. Based on.
Yeah, that's not our, it's outside of our purview. I mean, I assume somebody's done the research, but that's not for us to consider.
Do you know, just, maybe you don't, but where I would find that situation? Like what aspect of the city would have that or where it would have been provided?
Yeah, what typically happens is the planning board doesn't make its decision based on market demand, but based on what the applicants present. So the applicants do their own market research to determine whether their project is viable. So we've seen studies that different applicants have put forward, but we don't, I don't know that we have, I think the most recent study that has been done on hotel occupancy was probably done for the fairgrounds analysis.
Maybe the one downtown in the Roundhouse Lot, too.
Right, I think that, yeah, I think that was probably piggybacked onto the fairgrounds. So I, I mean, we might have a copy of that in our office, but it's definitely not.
Out of curiosity, so, but that's what we have right now. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other members of the public wish to speak on this project? For discussion?
I think to answer the distance between, it looks like it's 12 feet up to 14 feet between the two buildings, just for the record.
I wanted to ask Carolyn a question, you all are talking about traffic in terms of, I bet it's a bad corner for sure. And I, can I sort of talk of a roundabout going in there? Is that anything that's concretely in the future or?
Um, well, so, yeah, I mean, actually, this is the intersection, Devin, you might know. It's on the top in the Commonwealth for Problems. And so it's been. It on, it's in the circuit to be addressed. The SMS DIT hired a consultant to look at different options, whether it's signalization or roundabout. The city's pushing them to really look at roundabouts. I don't know if you were on that committee or the review of that initial design.
I've listened to them. At one point, they talked about a roundabout with a slip lane. And I was, I was very involved in that. A slip lane would allow you to come down Con Street and go out onto, towards the interstate without actually being involved in the roundabout. You would have your own little outer lane that you could go down, which sounds great for traffic and actually is very problematic for any other thing that goes on. It doesn't allow any crossings. It's, it's, so we, the discussion about that was more about the slip lane. I think the roundabout, once we get used to it, it's a perfect location for one.
So we don't really know, Carolyn, where we are in the process, but that's.
Right, it's, it's moving forward.
Moving forward.
I think it was 25 percent.
The other, another, so the signage on, or the elevation on the side that faces Con Street, is there gonna be, I mean, it's just a very flat side of a building. There's one sign at the top, there's three windows for the elevator. Or the stairwell, and that's it. There's no windows, there's no.
There's a door.
There's a door, two doors, three windows, and a very flat 45-foot-high wall. Yeah, well, and hopefully there'll be a lot of trees in front of it, too. But, um, do you, go, go ahead. There are three, I see three windows for the stairwell, it looks like. But there's really, it doesn't have much of a presentation on, that's the wrong side, it's the other side. But it doesn't have much presentation on the Con Street either. To the middle left. So there's what looks like three windows for the stairwell and two doors. I mean, it's not a very pleasing picture for Con Street. It's basically a 45-foot-tall, 60-foot-wide wall.
Not, not dissimilar from the Gazette position.
Gazette's a way, way back off the street. I can't believe we didn't make it put a tree there.
How far will that be from Con Street?
It's about 32 feet.
14 plus 18.
14 plus 18.
Okay. So it looks nice, actually, when you look at it in color.
Yeah, it's actually 30 feet back.
And visually it is, it's three different surfaces.
Well, where's the side? Doesn't it have the sideline?
I think that is the existing side.
I want to talk just a little bit about what Obie's thought is on that, that space and sort of the raised crosswalk versus the concrete and what.
Well, in terms of the driveway, I mean, I think that is a, is another alternative way to address sort of that idea of breaking up the 18-foot-wide drive aisle. I think the raised crosswalk is, and making it all the way connect through the planted tree belt there. And, and that would probably slow cars even more. That was sort of the alternative that we suggested to them, is having a parallel five-ward. So I don't think from staff level that, you know, I think they addressed the same thing, it's just a different way of doing it. thing, it's just a different way of doing it. So we would definitely be supportive of that as well. In terms of the facade, we don't have design standards in general in this district, and clearly, it's, you know, the side end of the building, and most of the design is for the front facade there. And it's a, you know, given that there's not flexibility in design, because it's an off-the-shelf product, I don't know where else we would go with it. I mean, we don't, it's not like central business where we have the capability of dictating what's facing the street.
Yeah, I think it leverages Steve's idea about trees, though. I mean, if that's what is being presented to the street, then I want the landscaping plan to be as robust as it can between the building and the street.
I mean, they were talking like, I just, I think it's a, it's a major entryway into the city, and I wish we had seen a better plan that really, you know, made something that was like, you know, this is one of three major roads into the city that everybody's going to come by. And it, there's not a lot there that says, you know, we really went...
Nothing there.
There's nothing there that says we actually did a lot to make it look good. It's a, you know, the area that says there has to be a road there, so there's a road there. And there has to be a side of a building there, so there's a side of a building there, but...
Other than the street trees, does this district have any landscaping requirements?
Um, no. The only, the requirements in general business are that you don't have a, you're not allowed to have a parking lot between a street and a building. This isn't technically a parking lot, it's a driveway, so we do allow driveways. So the only other thing is, if your building isn't at the property line, then you're required to put one tree per 30 feet of street front.
That's the street trees, but as far as the rest of the landscaping is concerned...
Right, but you, I mean, that doesn't mean that you can't require additional landscaping at the ground level. We've been benches, as the applicant had suggested, that maybe they could, you know, create area that makes it look more sort of pedestrian scale, and maybe bring a focus to the landscaping as opposed to that side of the building. That certainly is a valid requirement or condition.
Even the entranceway in there, I mean, even this little island, and the entranceway in there is pretty flat.
What do we think of board?
Carolyn, and you may have already hit on this, because I came in late, stormwater...
Permit was issued.
Issued this afternoon. Were there any issues with that or comments?
I mean, they have a separate condition, they have separate conditions for the stormwater permit that they need to meet. There were other DPW comments. Most of them were, again, technical in nature about wanting to see the final utility connections that were, that connected to the Con Street utilities and things of that nature. Not...
It was technical, not big?
Not anything that would change the site plan, really.
Was there anything we need to discuss, or they just say they have to meet the DPW or...
Yeah, I mean, pretty much you could say they need to meet the DPW requirements. I mean, I've identified them in, in conditions, which I'd be happy to read through, but they have to do with fireline connections, trenches into Con Street. The one thing I will note is because Con Street's so new, they have to comply with the moratorium, five-year moratorium, so, which means they have to pave much further than just the trench cuts to, into the street. And that's just standard DPW, it's not, they wanted to put that out there. And, um, yeah, they just want to make sure that if the new, brand-new sidewalk on Con Street is damaged during construction, they have to replace it. But that's basically it.
Not seen any bike racks, and there's a possibility, the way the front of the building runs, it could be covered by bike parking.
Can you speak to the bike racks?
Bike racks?
Well, it's true, there aren't any bike racks proposed in this project. I mean, figuring it's a hotel, I don't think users are going to be biking there necessarily. Maybe bikes would be used by employees.
Maybe the employees would. I mean, we, we went through a lot of effort to get bike racks on the new office building on the other side of the interstate, so...
I think you have, sit down and figure out where to put the bike racks.
Yeah.
Well, bike rack for employees, right now at the hotel, we have that. You know, I put a bike rack for them and they use them. So for that, it's not a, somewhere we can't find a bike rack and for the employees to use.
We want to see them on the plans, though.
Sure.
And, and I would encourage you to put them, because you've got all the possibility of putting them under the cupboard, it would be a good idea there.
Mm-hmm.
Or if there's this place internally for a cupboard, you know, inside the building, that, I don't know if you want to ask the applicant if they're, if that's a possibility, because that's probably, if it's really, if you're talking about employees, then they can just bring them inside and...
I mean, I think employees, I mean, it's not unusual at all for me to go to an inn now that has bikes, and I use them to get into town. I mean, it's a fat food arrangement.
Talking about that.
We have it at the hotel, too. But this is in the short stages. And just earlier, like we're studying do that, we might just get some bike and then rent a bike. Not, not rent it, actually, it's, yes, it's a complete, it means that they can take it and go to the bike path and stuff like that. But that, that is something that, right now, it is not, right now, we're just concentrating to do what we have to do and this manly of it, because they have their own standard. And to just have, have that balance, I think. And then they belong to those items with the ad, there is, yeah, there's no problem.
No, I don't think we can do it that way.
When we think of biking, transportation...
I think, I think...
Need them on the plans.
I think Ellebev is agreeable to providing bike racks on-site, but this part about providing bikes for customer use is something he might develop as...
It's none of my business, but I, they need to be on the plan.
Right.
It's going to be a condition, yeah.
What's, what's storage capacity?
12, 18, I don't know how many.
What did we put at the office building? It won't need to be that, that would be the higher end for this, but, I mean, it's...
Although what I want to suggest also is that people bring their bikes, because they come to Northampton, because the cycling is awesome here. And you probably don't want them bringing them into their rooms, and they're not going to want to leave them on their cars necessarily, so...
It's about a half a mile, a bike path. I mean, the bike path goes...
I think that the guests actually might want to park their bikes on the, in a bike rack.
That's why at the hotel here, we have storage for them.
Inside?
And it is, well, kind of, like it is in the back, but it is a shed that they store them there.
That's, I mean, yeah, that's great.
Yeah, those are for the guests and so on, that's, and also, don't forget, this is not the Hotel Northampton, that each time, there are 30, 40 employees. This is a limited, max every shift, probably be around like 10, okay, 10 employees, or probably sometimes a busy time.
Yeah, according to the parking places, there'll be seven, because that's, that's all there is in addition to rooms.
Yeah, so it is, it is limited. So if we have a bike rack, does that, can I call it?
Transfers?
18.
Well, there are 106 rooms. I'll go with 12. I would, I would like to know what, I mean, we're guessing at this point, but I think the high-end marker would be what we asked for at the office building. Because that's, do you remember what that was in any way?
Carolyn's going to pull it up for us.
I think that'll just give us a, you know, a logical metric, and then we can scale back from there.
Could you go back to the, I think it was the first picture you had of the lot, it was a photo?
The aerial photo?
Yeah, the aerial photo.
Okay. Let's go back. Is that one?
Yeah. There seem to be a lot of cars parked on the lot now.
Oh, wow.
Do you know where those are going to go?
Actually, though, I think those are from, I think this photo was from when the Gazette was still just finishing construction.
Okay.
So I think those are overflow from the Gazette lot. I've never seen cars parked in that manner.
You can see that on the left, in the Gazette, it's all...
Yeah, that, that chides with the fact that there aren't any in the regular lot, except extreme.
Right, yeah. I mean, this big dirt patch is, it's all grassed over again, and...
Well, it's also, you can see, you know...
See, there's nobody parked around here, you know?
The one thing about this picture, too, is it shows, see the size of the buffer between the sidewalk and the Gazette's parking lot? I mean, that's, that's like a King Street, or what we want. I mean, that's actually even bigger. You know, so, that nice green area where it says site is going to be, you know, there's going to be 14 feet, then a travel lane, and then a, you know, 45-foot-high wall.
Plus, there's also, but that doesn't count the sidewalk. Is that, what, 4 feet wide there?
Oh, I was counting from the sidewalk. So it's 14 feet of, of green space from the sidewalk to the travel.
But the, the building is set back from the street, 36-plus feet.
Yeah, 30. Right, I'm just adding.
Yeah, I, I don't think the road is a big deal, but, hmm.
I guess, where I struggle with, and I'm, I'm not sure, I'll, you know, what all you guys want to do, do we want them to come back and see more effort put into making this something that's more presentable? You guys, I mean, you guys might be, Randy, you look like you're capable, okay with voting on it now, but...
We're running in the same situation you do with subdivisions. I mean, they're shoehorning things in to places that are somewhat less than ideal, but the question is whether you want a building there at all or not, I think, in some respects.
Well, right, I think the issue is that they're meeting zoning. I think the one area, from what I'm understanding from Carolyn, that we have any control over is how they deal with that, you know, or some control over how they deal with the area in front. I, I don't think, I think zoning...
But I guess it's a special, it's a special permit. You know, we have more leeway than what we can ask. All right, sorry.
Well, just, if you, I mean, especially if, looking at that picture, I mean, I see what you're saying about it would not, if you look at the picture in total, and the street areas, I mean, if you go to the other side of the picture, on the right-hand side, there isn't any.
Oh, I know.
I mean, so, I mean, I guess, I guess that's where I, you know, it, it's not out of character with its surroundings. As poor as we may think those may be, it, it's still, even, I understand what you're saying, that's less than what it would be if it was on King Street, but it doesn't seem to be dramatically out of character with most of its surrounding area.
I guess, and we don't use this, this criteria, but is it, is it, is it less or more detrimental? And I think it's more detrimental to what's there currently. You know, but granted, it's a big green space.
Right.
So, I guess, we just spent two and a half years rezoning King Street, so you couldn't build this on King Street. And if you could just turn around and build it on Con Street.
Well, I mean, I guess that's the issue. We have really, we have very specific design standards for central business. And then King Street was about creating, not creating big blank walls at, at this level, and...
Big green buffers and...
And having buffers. But again, you know, we haven't addressed that in general business, so I don't think there would be appropriate to say we have, that we're going to tie the same standards for another district here, because we haven't had the conversation. I mean, the other piece of it is, I think, you know, we do need to think about gateways and gateway zoning potentially, but we haven't gotten there yet. And I think the other piece of it is, I think a building there is better than having this big void, because there is a sidewalk there, and walking across, past a big void is very different than feeling like it's being, you're enclosing the streetscape, because then you have the, the parking lot void just immediately right across the street. So then you really, really does feel more like a highway. The more building you have filling in there is going to start framing that street.
I'd actually be more, pretty happier if the, the side of the building was right up on the buffer rather than even, I mean, that to me would be better than having that, you know, sidewalk buffer, 18-foot driveway wall. I mean, I'd almost feel better if they just, it was all shifted up to the buffer. That is kind of what we wanted with King Street. And if there was some design aspects to that side, besides what there is.
I think that's the only part I'm having, struggling with, is just the, the side end. I don't really have an issue with the hotel being there, or even that, that road, if we did a raised crosswalk. But to a lesser extent, I equate it to, like the Student Center on Elm Street, where a lot of people thought that its back end was facing Elm Street, and in retrospect, thought, oh, I wish we maybe had done that, things differently there. And so here, it's not the back end, but it's the side where I think architecturally more effort can be made, just to make that more presentable, that end of it. But in, as a whole, I don't have an issue.
And I think it would be more important to have the architectural aspects be altered if the building was on the street. But given the separation, I think that's where the landscaping piece becomes more important, and so it can soften that, that...
Right. I, I think just more effort should be made than, than, this is, this is the model. You can't do anything about it, this is the model, and this is the way it needs to be, and we'll give you a couple more trees, but, but that's it. And so, to me, it, it works there, but more effort needs to be made on that end.
Well, it's the same problem you have when you have any franchised arrangement with franchised architecture. And you have to decide whether you're going to let McDonald's put its arches in, or whatever the franchise architecture is, because that's what this is, in essence. And I, I don't know whether, what, in this particular district, whether you have any say over that sort of thing or not.
There's nothing in the zoning right now that says anything about design standards for GB.
Look, because this is special permit, we have the opportunity, whether it's plantings or whatever, to, to do what we can.
Yeah, okay. But I mean, that's, it's a broader issue. I mean, it's always a broader issue with franchised architecture. So, just getting back to the, the bike storage for the, at the office complex, Annaphar Drive, 12, a cupboard storage for 12 bicycles per each building. So a total of 24.
Is there a strong desire to have the bike racks covered, or just to have them there?
I mean, I'd like to try to fit that under the, you know, the porcupine share extends out rather far, and I think that you should probably, at least, you know, overhead cover for the bike storage.
I was even looking on the corners of it, where it flares out.
What if you had two different places, one under the, half of, under and half of them somewhere else?
I mean, right now, if you can see this, we have the, kind of, a walkway and a crosswalk, and then this walk continues to here, and then you, people can cross that drop-off lane, and the porcupine share extends, you know, out to here. At least, that's the architectural model, you know, that we've got. So there's, there's space along the paved walk to extend that, if you will, for, you know, a pad for bike storage and a bike rack. Seems like a logical place to put some storage. If you're going to require overhead shelter in another or second location, we'd have to figure that out.
All right, well, just as a point of discussion that we can talk about, I would say we, we ask for 12 covered, and then I'm willing to bet that it will become such an enticing idea, they would be, have their own motives to add to it later on.
Right, and might dictate that they need more, but that would be, but at the, at the beginning, we would equate it to the Annaphar Drive project and have 12, and they'll be covered, and...
Okay.
So I think what we need to focus in on now, obviously, is the front entranceway, and what kind of conditions we want to put on that, so, right.
You mean the, the...
Side.
Side of the building, the east, the east elevation.
The street, the street side.
Street side, not...
Yeah, I...
The not front side.
Right, the not front side.
I am bothered by the, the shoulder image of the, of the building, but I must say, it's, I see the logic of wanting to have the circular traffic around it, and, I mean, there's, I, it makes sense, I just...
Absolutely.
Well, so are you talking about the raised crosswalk? Would it go from the side entrance door to the sidewalk, or would be an extension of the sidewalk in the front?
Oh, I would, I would have, I would have said yes to the sidewalk that goes to the front, but that...
That's why I thought you said it first.
I think so, too.
Oh, I was thinking it was from the door.
From the door to Con Street.
Yeah.
From the door that comes out the middle of that side entrance at the front.
You're talking about...
That one.
Across the way, yes.
All the way out to the sidewalk, yeah, okay.
Versus here.
Yes.
That would, that was the one I'm thinking about. I don't know that I have a basis of logic for one or the other. I, I think the more people will use that.
Both, both.
Are you showing the sidewalk around the perimeter of the building, or is that not?
Yes, the sidewalk currently, you know, extends out along the front, the side, the rear, and then this is a, a... And then this is a, a, like a brick terrace, you know, for some tables and what have you. Like a breakfast terrace or something.
So there is, right, so it's not raised, but there already is a sidewalk there to the.
Yeah, it's, it's, it's up on, you know, with, it's raised six inches.
So are people thinking raised sidewalk to the street?
What about, just throwing this out there, going along the stamped concrete, going with like a G O block or something where it's a, it's, you can travel a bit over it, you know, it's a, but it's a, gives the, it's more of a green space. So you have, you have basically pavers that grass grows through, so you can travel over them. But visually, as you drive by, it looks more like a green space than a paved, I don't know.
A permeable pavement.
A permeable pavement.
And in what area would you mean to replace? This?
Well, that wouldn't save many money, that's for sure. That stuff is.
Thanks, Frandy.
But, I mean, it would, it would allow for travel, which I, I don't have an issue with traffic. Aesthetically, I have an issue with paving. And so it might lessen that impact, but still allow for the, the.
Right, it seems to more clearly delineate this is a different space.
But you still should have something that goes across whatever landscaping is up there in the front that puts a sidewalk that connects it to the, to the street sidewalk. Now, whether you do it at the corner or whether you do it in the middle, you still need something that goes across.
So you're thinking both?
Yeah.
I, I don't see any enormous difference between the, that spot adjacent to the building and the rest of the parking lot, which is all asphalt, all running right along exactly the same place. Why would it bother you more to have the lane there than it does up above next to the parking lot?
I think I'm more interested in landscaping not to see it, and doing it all along that, all along that perimeter than I am.
Yeah.
I, I think Frandy's talking about the, the upper border of the parking lot and the lower corner of the parking lot. And, and solving that, what is currently now the sort of beige-covered space doesn't say anything to those.
It doesn't particularly.
So, I mean, I'm thinking that in addition to streetscape trees, that we want some sort of, you know, at eye-level landscaping, whether it's a raised berm or whether it's, you know, there's enough distance there to do, I mean, it's, um.
Well, one of the things you could do if you want to see the landscaping plan, you could approve it and just say that before they construct, they have to finalize the landscape plan for that frontage, and then you would get to review that. Because I think the level of detail you're talking about would be hard to dictate now. And then without continuing the whole project, I mean, you could do it two ways. You could continue the whole thing and wait to see a revised landscape plan, or you could condition the permit to say, we approve it, but before you put anything in the ground, you need to come back and get approval for the landscaping in front of the building.
Well, I'm kind of amazed that the building is being, I mean, that they've solved a lot of problems to get that building in that lot. And so, I mean, it, and, and I don't see that we've really got the right set of reasons to say, no, you have to move the building. I mean, given, given the zoning, given the situation, I don't see that that's really feels like what we're supposed to do here. So that would allow them to proceed with their dealings with corporations and, and planning and whatever. But yeah, I think that we're all kind of bothered by the, uh.
By all of the landscapes.
We're hoping that the landscape doesn't make it look like the rear end of the building is facing the street.
Board members, I've actually had this conversation with Mansour about how it looks from Con Street, and this kind of conversation had more to do with looking at that second drive, if you will. But I don't think that Mr. Galabaff is opposed to, you know, creating like a, a berm in that green strip and then doing additional landscape plantings that are, you know, lower or, as you call it, eye-level, rather than canopy. So I don't think we're disagreeable to it. It's a question of how you want to logistically handle, you know, how we go about the process.
Well, it's mixed, wouldn't it? I mean, we're still talking, you want street trees, you still want the berm.
Right.
So we're not saying get rid of the street trees.
Oh, no, no, no. Right, we, we wouldn't do that, no.
Well, and in some ways, it works for the function of the building. I mean, I've, I've just heard him say that that back little thing is a breakfast patio. I mean, you know, you don't want to be 50 feet off Con Street for breakfast, so.
Watching cars zip by.
Yeah.
Let me ask you this, Carolyn, could we almost sort of bifurcate and approve the project except for this piece of it, and then let them, they've heard what we had to say, we've had a lot of conversation about this now, let them come back? A proposal, in keeping with what we've discussed?
Yeah, and I think, I think it, I think the, if, to do that, yes, I think you can do it, I think you should do it as a condition, that the landscape plan has to be approved by the board in, and so then they would bring that back to you at a, at a hearing so that you could approve it. But then it allows them to move forward with financing, with Gazette, with everybody else.
Is landscape too narrow, though? Because I think we're not, we want to encompass not just the landscaping, but the drive in front.
Ronding.
Yeah, I, I want to make sure that that's clear, that we're not just talking about trees and shrubbery, we're talking about the raised, you know, that, that concrete in front.
Well, I think that maybe the, I'm, I'm not sure, it sounded like there was still some discussion about how the treatment of the paved area. So if you all can't come to, if you can't decide what's appropriate for that now, then yes, it probably should be included in the, sort of, the holdback as, as needing to come back. Or you could maybe address that issue and close that out, and then just leave it to landscaping. So whatever you guys feel is.
Okay, well, I think we had to condition the crosswalk separately, and if it's, if it's a real raised crosswalk, there's several feet on each side that could be distinct from the rest of the road, and it would break it up. I don't think, I don't think the idea of having pervious, semi-pervious driveway that would have grass growing in it would particularly help things at all. It's, it's a motel, it's going to look like a motel, you're going to have trouble getting a motel put in that doesn't look like a motel.
Or that maintains that. I mean, all the, all you have to do there is not maintain the grass.
I mean, and you're, you're looking over this thing, it's not like, it's, it's not like the wall, you know, you're not going to hide the wall. You got to embrace it, I guess.
Maybe that depends itself to the, to the additional plantings along the road. So you wouldn't even see what's there.
Yeah.
Yeah, that's what I prefer.
I, I don't, I don't, I don't think it's reasonable, I mean, I don't know, unless you're going to buy it, put a berm in that's 30 feet high, I don't know what purpose a berm would serve.
I just don't want to.
Yeah, it's going to hide.
I don't want to see the parking lot as much.
Yeah. And if it's greened and, and planted and.
Very similar.
That's why I think you shouldn't look at the plant.
Wait a minute, one at a time, what?
So in King Street, you know, the strip between the sidewalk and the parking is, it's a berm. It either has to be a berm, or it has to be planted such that it's a visible break, so you can't see. So as you're walking by or biking by or driving by, you don't look out and just see a field of parking, you see a raised berm or planted shrubs.
That's, that's a big oar. Planted shrubs would be fine, I just, I don't know, I.
Well, I think even, on King Street, the rules of the berm has to be a certain height with the stuff on it, because we have all the rules on King Street.
Oh, okay.
So what I think I'm hearing from the, I'm sorry, go ahead.
No, it's not King Street, that's all, go ahead.
What I think I'm hearing from the board is that folks feel comfortable with a raised crosswalk where the pavement is, and we can condition that, and then have them come back just relative to the landscaping.
One raised crosswalk, I couldn't know, we decided one or two.
My reaction is they should decide, I mean, it's from a design point of view, I think there needs to be a crosswalk. I would have put it in one place, but I think they can study that issue and put it either one. I, I just think there needs to be one, there needs to be pedestrian access to the street.
All the way across to the sidewalk.
Yeah.
From that side door, yeah.
And we want them to landscape.
Or the front, I don't care, they could put it either one if they wanted to.
Or the front, or the sidewalk that's, that's on top side.
Yeah, my bet is that front sidewalk's going to carry much more pedestrian traffic than the side door, but that, I'm, they can do that.
Sufficient trees to satisfy the requirement, zoning requirement.
And from the approved tree list.
And from the approved tree list, exactly. But, I mean, it seems to me like we could approve this. And we can, we can even make the raised sidewalk subject to approval along with it, but as a separate condition. We have to approve the landscape plan, we could also approve the raised crosswalks.
Well, if we're telling them, we only want one, but it's up to them to where they want to put it, where we want to approve. They're going to put it in one place or the other.
As long as they put it.
Well, they might design one that's a speed bump or something, that, you know.
Well, I think we're clear, we want a raised striped pedestrian crosswalk.
Yeah, well, I think there's a big budget, well.
You think there's a.
Well, this is a big.
Can I interrupt us all to ask a question? Is the, um, the, the crosswalk that goes across the, the driveway to that outside parking area, is that raised?
No, it is not.
Okay. So there's no ra, none of the sidewalks are raised at this point?
No.
Okay.
Make that one raised too. Good thinking.
What about this one?
Do we have consensus on that?
Yes.
Did I give people enough time to stew? Okay.
So do, do I understand that you're leaving it to us to decide where the location of the one raised crosswalk?
Well, I think we have two options.
Building to Con Street.
Right, right.
It's either from the side door.
From the side.
Or from the front sidewalk.
To the Con Street sidewalk.
Really, there's only two places to put it.
The reason.
It would be basically level with the sidewalk at the hotel and come to the Con Street sidewalk flush, but it would be raised.
Does it make sense at this point for Carolyn to read off the conditions, as I think we have them right now?
There's one other one.
Bike.
The bikes.
Covered bikes.
Yeah.
Covered, but, well, also the light levels.
The lighting, yeah.
When I suggested the raised crosswalk, I envisioned it by the side door, figuring that it would do part of the function of the concrete landing strip there, wherever.
Right, I think we're all in agreement, it's, it's going to function both as a, a safe pedestrian access as well as a, as a speed.
Yeah.
But it's just, which place, one of the two places we want to.
Yeah, it works everywhere.
Right, and the tree, obviously, the trees have to be compliant with zoning, that you had mentioned, Steve, that you have that condition?
The number.
The pear trees are going to be replaced with a list, okay.
And a bike storage for 12 bicycles under the front canopy.
Do you want Carolyn to read through the conditions as we've discussed them, or do you feel like you have them?
I'll go ahead and read through them, because I, I also incorporate some of the DPW conditions. Prior issuance of building permit, the following shall be completed, the applicant shall submit to opposite planning development for final review, the easement and maintenance language for the shared driveway in the parking, and this shall be reported to registry of deeds prior to construction. Plan shall be revised and resubmitted with signature and stamp by registered Massachusetts P E. Revision shall include applicable conditions as, as noted below. And revised construction plan, a construction plan shall be submitted to DPW for final review prior, at least two weeks prior to construction. Sheet L three shall be revised to show all existing utilities, including those connecting to Con Street and rim invert elevations and structures with utility tie-in. Prior issuance of building permit, the applicant shall submit a planting plan for final approval to address landscaping along the Con Street frontage. Street tree planting shall meet the standard of one tree per 30 feet of frontage. Tactile warning strip location and orientation for the curb ramp type two shall be revised to meet DPW standards. Light level shall comply with zoning, that was the one thing we didn't touch on, so unless you guys want to approve a waiver. I'll, I'll merge some of these, but all pear trees should be swapped for selection for the city's street tree list. Water shut-off and sewer cleanout shall be provided at the property line and located in the grass area behind the sidewalk. Branch off the fire line for domestic service with its own water shut-off shall be outside the entrance of the building. Fire line requires double check valve assembly, and cross-connection permit is required from DPW. Trenches cut into the Con Street within, are within the moratorium period and require milling and overlay 20 feet wide on either side of the trench. Utility trenches in Con Street are required to be backfilled with controlled-density fill in accordance with DPW standards. If cement concrete sidewalks on Con Street are disturbed for, during construction, they should be replaced in kind in accordance with DPW standards, and shall be replaced to the nearest undisturbed panel. Street trees approximate to utility connection should be located so, to the extent practical, outside the mature drip line. Bike storage for 12 bicycles shall be located under the front canopy, and in lieu of the concrete material along the driveway, along Con Street, a raised crosswalk from the building to the Con Street sidewalk shall be installed along that side of the building.
And then the street trees every 30 feet?
I had that.
You said it?
Yeah.
And did you put in the condition about, sorry if I missed it, about the landscaping?
Yes, that prior to issuance of building permit, they have to submit.
So we're thinking, who plows the, that's not a city street, right?
Where?
This, the, from Con Street to the.
No, it's a driveway.
It's a, that's a driveway. So because the sidewalk is right up on the driveway, along the, there's no planting strip between the sidewalk and the driveway, so can they plow onto the driveway, onto the sidewalk?
I'm not sure where.
See, um, when you're coming in from Con Street, there's a sidewalk that runs right along Con Street and right along the driveway with no buffer between it and the driveway?
Next to the sign.
You see what I'm saying? Yeah, can they, can they snowplow? Can they plow snow?
Onto the.
Onto that, onto that sidewalk? There's not a lot of.
You can't plow snow onto the public sidewalk, and it shouldn't be plowing snow onto their own sidewalk.
Okay, so that's, even though it's on their driveway, it's considered a public sidewalk?
No, I, I, you could put that as a condition, that snow should be kept off all sidewalks.
Yeah, because I, I think there's no, there's no buffer to plow the snow, there's not a lot of, there's not a lot of green space to put the snow.
Yeah.
So I could see it'd be very easy to, to plow snow up onto either that sidewalk or any of the interior sidewalks.
Yeah. Say that sidewalks shall be kept clear of snow.
Yeah, I don't know, there's, there's going to be a lot of trucks pulling snow out of there.
Not these days.
Yeah, that's true.
I'll entertain a motion.
Close a public hearing.
Second? All in favor? Any further discussion?
I just wish there was more.
Anyone want to make a face?
No, I just wish there was more of an attempt on the applicant to, to actually create a building that presented a nice appeal as an entranceway. But I, I just don't think this is going to be. I know we're going to fix the berm and put the planting in, but, I mean, maybe we look at the entranceway zoning soon, because Pleasant Street, I think, is fairly ripe for, there's a lot of big spaces on Pleasant Street that I think if not sooner, rather than, are going to be redeveloped, so I, I really think we should look at Conn's and Pleasant and whatever we're going to zone those, because, like I said, if this was King Street, it wouldn't be built.
I think what bothers me is we keep talking about this edge in the shoulder of the building, but the building doesn't respond to the street at all. I mean, basically, it just says, you know, I'm, I'm ignoring the street, I'm turning sideways.
Right, and this, this is the same building that would be dropped into Anytown, USA, because that's the way they build them.
Right. And I don't know that we're in any position to not accept that.
I know, that's why I think, so what I'm saying, this is a motivation for us to say.
That there's not a tree on the lot next door, and so in that sense, I'm patting myself on the back that at least we're moving in that direction.
But I think it's motivation.
Sorry, we've already closed a public hearing, so we, we can't take any comment at this point.
Okay, I just was going to answer the question of the.
I'm sorry, we can, I'm sorry. We've already closed. Sorry.
I suppose somebody could, some people could make a, say, uh, make a case for the fact that you're better off looking at the end of the building than at the front of it. Because it's not an architectural marvel on the front either.
Well, and it's a small.
Read it, Randy.
Yep.
Okay.
Some ways you could say.
So in terms of the planting, do we have to have that before CO, before building?
Building permit.
Before building permit?
I don't.
I don't have my, I've looked for my table.
I make a motion to approve the request on the insured job, job offer, special comments to construct a good main room hotel at 115 Con Street. Map ID, 39A, F4, conditions.
Second?
Second.
All in favor? Thank you. Mark, do you want to swap?
They have.
Yeah. I'd like to open a public hearing scheduled for nine o'clock. Request by Kuzenzi Automotive Realty Limited Partnership for major project site plan to construct two buildings of 36,000 plus square foot total at 347 King Street, North Hampton. Map ID, D dash 51. There it is.
You founded it?
Did you get the?
I'm reading.
It's, it's the.
I was going to say, we've been shot down. It was too tall.
I was looking around for my.
I couldn't find it.
I couldn't find it. I was trying to find it.
I use this.
Yeah, yeah, no. And. I mean, this is a low.
Yeah, it was.
That was. What you do with these.
Central business, we kind of.
Yeah. Yeah. In the state?
I don't know if the number one is up. It's on the top, whatever. Five.
I mean, that's exactly when I wrote my stuff.
Which is, well, that's exactly what I. It would have been nicer to have the entrance. Side, so as you.
So do you think I should share?
Hey, just skip it.
And you know what? I can't say that it's been a great idea to have.
Right, I would have.
That's not the hotel that's going to be doing this.
Point is.
Yeah, well, and everything. No, I think it's.
But it could, but it goes down like this way sometimes, but it could.
It's hard to argue with that.
Well, I mean, also.
That's why I surprised to see that he ported.
What just happened?
I saw it. I was up here today for a public.
And I think I have, I think I have.
Also?
Here.
Okay.
I probably didn't even read it four or five times, but we'll see what happens. You already read, okay. I just, I heard you recently. My name's Kim Maslowick. I'm an engineer with Associated Builders, and I'll be presenting tonight on behalf of Kuzenzi Automotive Realty. With me tonight, I have Matt Bruin, another engineer from our office, and Tom Kuzenzi, and also Skeet Zidoriya. All around the village, our traffic engineer. Um, so we're here tonight for site plan approval for a major project. The redevelopment of 347 King Street, formerly known as Cole Morgan, to construct two auto dealerships. One being North Hampton Volkswagen, which is currently located, they're renting space in the old Subaru building that's. On Damon Road and Country Hyundai, which is currently in Greenfield, Mass. So very anxious to get going here. They're ready to go as soon as we can, so we're very close to town to try and make that. This is just a locust map here so that you can see, uh, a site is, and I don't have the map here. Site is outlined in black here. This is King Street, and this is Damon Road in this area right here. So you can see this is the existing Cole Morgan facility. It's roughly 90,000 square feet. It's a sea of paving out here. It's paved right to the property edge with the exception of this small grass buffer in the front. Uh, it's a five acre parcel. For the utilities and everything, we've already been in there doing abatement on the inside of that building. And we did receive a demolition permit to begin demolition of the entire facility. But we've been in there for quite some time now doing abatement, and we probably have about 10 weeks to go for the demolition of this structure. Wonderfully, amazingly, so this lot doesn't have any wetland resource areas on it, no flood plain, historical significance. So quite a switch for us because usually everything has something of conservation at this point. But, uh, everything was pretty good on this lot. The soils, actually, let me go to the next screen. It's our existing conditions plan, and it's in a different orientation. So King Street is on the bottom of this. It's all white up here, so it's hard to see what this is. There we go. Okay. So King Street is on the bottom in this orientation now, and north is going this way. And you can see that this is actually gray on our plan, which didn't show up very gray here, but this is all the paved areas. And there's two driveways, one up front, so this is towards the Damon Road intersection. Another drive in this area and that small bit of grass there. This grass back here is really broken pavement with some grass in it. You can't even really call it grass, but, um, so again, no wetland resource areas on it. And with the soils, we did have a geotechnical engineer go out there. Clarence Welty did a study for us, and soils weren't that great. They're still silt, sand, and varve clay. But we're actually bringing the site up just a little bit so that we won't have any settlement issues and whatnot. Water table, seven feet below grade, so that, that was all good. The utilities have all been cut and capped already as part of the demolition of the facility. And the existing stormwater management system, really, they don't have one to speak of. Um, there's a series of catch basins on here, and they're all strung together, and they come out and discharge into King Street. There's a bunch of roof drains that come through and tie in. There's about six of them that tie in to King Street. And when we did the cut and cap, we actually found that we'd be able to reuse a lot of these. Because we don't have to go back out to King Street. And that's actually one of the plan changes that we made going back. We were working with DPW and Dave and Doug, both of them, to work on stormwater and the sanitary sewer and whatnot. And, um, we were able to modify those so that we could use some of those connections. So this is the proposed plan here. Again, the gray area is the new paving. Brown are these new facilities. And then the grassed area around here. And these, um, there's a shared drive right here. And if you take a look, they're almost, almost mirror images of one another as far as functionality. And like this area is the showroom, same thing on this side. This is a service drop-off, service drop-off over here, and then service bays in the back of these facilities. So, um, this side is Volkswagen, and that's a proposed 18,421 square foot facility with 216 parking spaces. Of course, much of that is for inventory. Hyundai is on the other side here. That's 17,821 square feet with 291 parking spaces. As far as traffic circulation for vehicles, this is a great improvement. First of all, we have the, the shared drive, and this is farther away from this Damon Road intersection up here. So whereas you had two, you know, one entrance here at the existing, another one on this location, we consolidated to one. And then there was, when we met for the technical review and whatnot, it came to our attention that, um, Coalvest, who is developing this, this site on the right here. There's a condition of approval for their site plan to provide an easement for access for anyone developing this lot. So that people that are traveling in this direction, um, instead of crossing King Street, they can continue down to the new signal that's going in here. Actually, I think it's in now, and come through their site and then over in this direction so that we wouldn't have to do that. Now, car carriers can't even physically make this, so they won't be going in that direction. And, um, you know, Carla and Tom will make sure that they direct their car carriers so that they can come through and use, and go in this direction here. But again, this is a much safer condition for them. Just so you know, the flow of, um, the customer and employee traffic throughout this site here. So you can come in, and then you turn in. This is customer, same thing here, customer parking. So I'll kind of go over this side, and the mirror image is the same as far as the layout. But so you can come in, this is a customer parking showroom, or you come in and this is a service drop-off. So all of the drop-off and pickups and whatnot, they can do inside the building, which is nice. These are all high-speed, um, roll-up overhead doors, which are really good for heating and everything. And you just, you know, they're quiet, and it's up, it's down, and you don't have to see into any kind of garage or anything of that nature. So, um, that is, I keep losing the mouse here, uh, over there on that side. And then when these cars are dropped off, the service bays are in the back, and the techs can take the cars out in this direction. And these are service storage. So if they're not working on them today, they can park them here. Employee parking is here, and then we've got inventory basically all around in this direction. And there's display inventory right along the frontage here, and then customer parking also along the front and into this direction right here. As part of our traffic mitigation, and just to conform to the zoning regulations in the highway business district here. We had to adjust this tree belt here because the sidewalk originally was just a few feet off of the back, the street edge for King Street. So what we have shown here is moving that back so that you have the required 10-foot, um, grass tree belt between the edge of the street and the edge of the sidewalk. And then the sidewalk is a six-foot wide for a new sidewalk. Then we have a minimum 12-foot, um, onsite buffer strip, I would call it, before we have the parking. And those are all part of those, I think they're fairly new highway business district regulations that, that we went through and worked out with Carolyn and Wayne. And as part of our traffic mitigation, we're actually deeding to the town this front tree belt here and the sidewalk. And then two feet past that in the event that you ever want to make that. So, you know, we'll go through, we'll do all the improvements and the trees and whatnot that are shown here, which I'll talk more about. Um, but then we, we are proposing a deed. It's, it's hard to see on this plan, but we did bring an A and R plan with us also tonight for, for that. And also for the future separation of these lots because they are interested in taking this lot and dividing it almost just like that. So we have, where we have this new walk here, we have, and it's hard to see, but there's walks leading up here, and they're flanked on both sides with, um, green space. Same thing on this side. They come right up and go to the front doors. It's a continuous walk, and it goes all the way across, get a crosswalk and into this, um, facility over here. And on our original plans that we filed, Carolyn mentioned that we need to, um, narrow this down for the zoning regulations so that at these, where the crosswalks go through the drive aisle, we had to narrow that to 18 feet, which we did. And, um, you know, we do have the, the stampedcrete here in the cobble pattern to make that, that change, visual and texture and everything. So we did that in those three locations right there, there, there. We do have eight bike racks provided in these locations and benches as well, um, which is kind of nice because it's right off of the sidewalk. And, um, even if they pull around, you know, inventory cars to go for test drives or whatnot, it'll be nice because people can kind of sit there and, um, just while they're waiting for that. Or if it's nice out, obviously, if not, they'll be inside the building. But, um, there, there is a planting strip here that's hard to see also in front of the buildings, but there's lots of glass, which you'll see on the, on the renderings in a minute there. Traffic mitigation, again, we've got, this is very improved driveway, um, which is going to be great for safety issues, the pedestrian we talked about. Uh, but we do have, you know, having the shared driveway and having the two dealerships side by side, it allows, it helps reduce traffic by, um, just having people do comparison shopping in one trip rather than making two. And, you know, you also got bike racks to promote employees and customers as well to, to come in and use those. And we will make available, um, the bus route schedule and whatnot because the bus route is available on King Street. So we'll do that as well. Zoning setbacks, like I said, you just really have this frontage here. There's zero setbacks, um, on the side, the rear. Uh, but we did pull this back, the parking, we pulled it back. Right now, this is literally paved right up to the edge. Um, we did have to, we're a little bit closer back here, there's like five feet, but we did pull it back in a little bit so we could have some really nice. And screens in this area. Utilities and stormwater are all readily available. Like I mentioned, we're able to reuse quite a few of them. We've been working very closely with Doug and Dave. We do have the stormwater permit, and we did get comments from, from Dave as well, but they were mostly clerical with the exception of adding one sign right in this location saying no left turn. So we can kind of go through those. But the, the utilities are all coming up the corridor here in between these two buildings. And they're kind of like, there's a main line that branches off with the exception of the fire protection line. And that was something that, um, Dave and, Dave and Dave, Dave Letta and Dave Sparks, had asked about having is, um, reusing an existing fire line in here to this facility, but having a new separate line for this one. So we did that, and the electrical services come in from the back, and those are separate. But the rest of them, the sewer and gas, they come up and they branch off to each, to each building. But it's okay, they each have separate meters so that when they, you know, do separate this lot. Right now, the intention is they'll subdivide the lot, but it will still be in common ownership with Kuzenzi. Um, but in the future, if, if in the event it does change, they will be okay with separate meters and everything. So we worked that out with, um, Dave, and he was good with all of that. So stormwater, you can see we're reducing the impervious surfaces, which is great for, um, as far as the quantity of runoff and whatnot. And before, there was really no treatment of the, of the stormwater at all, and it was just catch basin to catch basin, catch basin to catch basin and out, uh, which just really recirculates all the sediment and pollutants and carries them out. So we've got offline catch basins with hoods and deep sumps. And then prior to discharge, um, these will come into a treatment device, a hydrodynamic separator, um, for gas and oil and sediment and whatnot. And that has 80% total suspended solid removals prior to discharge. There's a header pipe right across here that has, ties into those multiple existing outlets into King Street so that we could, um, really kind of have an equilibrium pipe here and let all the water flow off and, and use those existing, um, existing connections. So landscaping, we have, um, lots of landscaping, and it's hard to see on this plan. But essentially, it's one per 25-foot of frontage along this tree belt, and then a repeat of that, one per 25, along this onsite buffer here. So those are, um, linden trees, which are off the, the tree list that Carolyn directed us to. And then we have hornbeam in these islands here, which kind of break up the, the parking. There's red, oh, maple?
Maple.
Maple. I keep confusing with oak, um, all along this, the, the sides here. And originally on this plan by the pride station, they were pine trees, and, um, we, we switched those. We had talked to Carolyn. I, I, oak, um, you know, we made it all the same all the way around here. So we did switch those. That was a change from the plans that, that you have there. Um, there's a couple of dogwoods in the back in these smaller islands. And then we have, uh, all shrubs, um, and grasses in between these. And I apologize, it's hard to see on these things here, but we do have, um, all of those to provide the screening that was in, in the zoning regulations. And then we also added just, um, some shrubs here in this area to make it a little more inviting for people coming through for the Coalvest area. And signage, um, normally is done under a separate permit typically with car manufacturers because they have their own, you know, they buy certain signs. And they, they do that. But the intent here is really to have, um, you know, one ground sign for each of these facilities right up at the entrance, and then have something over here to draw your attention to it when you're coming in. So just to take a step back for a minute, along King Street, when you're driving in this direction, there's a sign here across the street, and that says VW and Hyundai, turn left at the next signal. So that when you go to turn here, you can't, there's do not enter signs that are kind of angled and facing to, to see this traffic. And then this sign will direct you forward. So you go to the signal, and then you turn. We do have another sign proposed right here that would just basically say VW and Hyundai and have an arrow to the left. and have an arrow to the left. And we're still working out those, we're working with Coalvest to get that all approved and ironed out, and get the easements drawn up. But essentially, that'll direct you to here. And what we were thinking of doing here is, they have signs, you know, you see banner signs, like I see the Hot Chocolate Run is like a banner on a light pole type of thing. And if we did two of those, one on each side here, but not with a cloth banner, with actually an aluminum sign, you know, something that's going to last for a while, and put them on each side, it would really kind of, it would light the area, and it would also, you know, it would be higher up so that you could see it when you were coming in here. Because I'm afraid if we put something on the ground, you're really not going to see it when you're over here. And, you know, if this sign becomes a problem for Coalvest, well, then at least we have these to draw you, you know, draw your attention over into that area. And the plan revisions I mentioned before, basically just these trees, and then items that we worked on with Dave and Doug, after we found, you know, we cut and capped these utilities and found out what was there, we updated the survey, and we updated our utility connections and stormwater connections accordingly for that. And then narrowing down and having these aisles narrow to the 18 feet with the stampcrete as well. And this is Northampton Volkswagen, and this is their signature look here. This is white Alucabond metal panel. It's composite metal panel, very similar to what you have on all your other dealerships on this strip. So lots of glass, this whole facade is, you know, 70, I think it's like 78% glazing for VW. And this is actually glass too, it just looks that way because of the shadow. But we've got, again, the walks up here, and they park the cars in the showroom right in front of the glass, so you can see them. And then, at nighttime, we don't have like the lights overpowering in the parking lot, because they turn them on in the building, and you can really see the cars, and it really looks nice and showcases the interior of the building and the cars that are inside there. Those are those rapid speed doors for service drive over here in this area. The building is 21 foot nine. That's actually one other change that we've been going back and forth again. This is, you know, manufacturers, and they want what they want, and it's very difficult. We spend a lot of time going back and forth with them. But if you want to be in their dealership program, you know, they want you to comply as much as possible with their image. You have to maintain their image, or you can lose your dealership. So 21 foot nine is what we have here. Originally, we had 26, which was their other standard height, but we were able to drop that down. And, you know, so we've got that. And then around the back, it wraps to masonry, and this is like metal, standard metal panel with vertical ribs and corrugations on it. And this is almost, you know, exact, if you look at the other dealerships, it's very, very similar. They have the block, and then the panels here. So, and this is Hyundai, Country Hyundai. So main entrance is right here, and then they have their signature sign here on the corner. A lot of glazing, again, a little bit less than VW, but still quite a bit. It wraps around the showroom and the service drive, just like the other facility did. This building is 24 foot to here, and, or 24 six to here, and then 28 to the top of this. So this is up a little bit. And both of these buildings are single slope to the back, and they have a parapet wall all around here, so that it'll hide the HVAC units and whatnot on the top. This is just another summary of project benefits. Of course, revitalization of a vacant lot, you get all the benefits, the jobs, the revenue, energy-efficient new facilities, and that's something that we always do. You guys, of course, have the stretch code here in Northampton, so there's a lot of extras that are required for this, for insulation values and whatnot. So that will be taken into consideration. But we also always have, you know, energy-efficient HVAC equipment, LED lights inside and out, occupancy sensors, things of that nature, so that it's, you know, might be a little more of an investment in the beginning, but in the long run, it works for the owners and it works for everybody in general, plus her carbon footprint. The safety, again, that I mentioned, for the vehicles, just by changing that to one entrance that's farther away from the Damon Road intersection, having the sidewalks, bike facilities and everything, and then the traffic mitigation that I mentioned. And we did work out in the zoning, we sat down with Carolyn and Wayne, and based on the zoning for this zoning district, you need to financially participate based on the peak hour generation, and that, you know, they've come up to, I think the number is 79 to 30, and they've all kind of agreed on that. So I think we're good in that area. Increased landscape areas, you know, the other, the existing facility is a sea of paving, and so we will definitely change that. You'll have more landscaped areas and lots of plantings, which are virtually non-existent except for a row of shrubs on one side there. Stormwater improvements, because there's no treatment on that existing site right now. And again, I already mentioned, energy-efficient facilities. So I think that sums it up. If you have any questions, I don't know if you have anything to add.
Well, I understand, I think, what you're trying to do with the traffic to make it flow, regardless of the number of signs and things that might be in place, as our local bridge proves on a fairly regular basis, people don't only see signs.
Yep.
They're there to help them. So I'm just-
Flashing lights or anything.
Yeah, I just, I'm honestly a little concerned that it could actually create confusion and accidents, as opposed to avoiding them, because people will see and point and turn without noticing all the things, telling them, oh, to go down to the, I just, how did you arrive at that particular solution, or how?
This was not our choice. It was really something that we had, you know, we talked about, and it was a condition for Coalvest. In my opinion, it's, I like this idea that they can come down here and do this maneuver, but I think even if you didn't have the signs, and as you said, people don't use the signs, it will be self-regulating, because you're not going to sit there indefinitely if you can't, if it's too busy and there's too much traffic, you will go and turn, you know, I mean, I've done it. So it's almost, it would be self-regulating. And this island right here is mountable. It's so that car carriers can actually get in here. So, you know, if somebody did make this turn, they could physically do it. But the signage and the requirement for that is really up to you. If you want to do away with it, we would be completely fine with it.
Maybe Carolyn can speak to that, because it's a city, a city thing.
Yeah, I mean, what part of the issue, and I think the benefit of this project, and what makes it great, is the reduction of the curb cuts and the, but again, the proximity to Damon Road makes it complicated. And we have talked about, and I don't know if it's going to happen during the, for the Damon Road construction, but we envision that at some point, there's going to be a median down King Street.
And that would be-
So that would be the enforcement.
Yes.
Yeah.
And we already have sort of the rumble strip further down by stop and stop, and some people, you know, like to cross that, if there aren't anything, you know, anything to puncture your tires.
I mean, the thing is, I think this is good, because I think it will be used, I think it will be used, because there is, you know, there's the need for it. It's just, it's training the customers. It really is, it's training the employee, everybody, the employees will know, but it's really, you know, trying to train them. And if you do get the median, then your goal, and it's all set up for it, but.
The person exiting the dealership and turning south, which is a big problem with the Honda lot, I can vouch for.
They can't do that.
They'll have to go through to the stoplight also.
Right, yes.
Did you mention there are going to be signings for that?
There are signs right here that says, if you're coming out here, this says "no left turn here," and there's a sign right here that says "no left turn." So on this pole, it's got one sign that is for these people, and it says, "go to the next signal and turn left." And then there's one in the opposite direction for these people looking this way that says "no left turn." And there's also one here that Dave Valetta asked us to add today, and that's a no left turn as well. Just an extra one.
Well, I mean, you can see on the south, all the curb cuts across the street.
Yes.
So if you're coming out of there, it's not, it would not be an easy thing anyway for you to make southbound.
Yeah, that's what I'm hoping, is that people are going to feel so vulnerable sitting out on King Street, that they will realize there's a light. Because the light, we aren't used to the light yet.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Well, and that was, when we did the Coalvest plan, you know, if there's easement, you can see it, and there's another one on the other side, if that lot ever gets to go, again, all three parcels could share that one light at Coalvest.
Fine, it's right, it makes sense.
But I'd like-
Why we put that light in?
To go to the car carrier story, a piece of the transportation, because they, I mean, you probably don't know the story we've had about transfer trucks coming into town. I mean, we do get one stuck under the bridge about once a week. And this doesn't necessarily put itself on the bridge route, because you can come in from the Con Street and come right up Pleasant and come straight through, but, and that's the way you're going to have to come. So it's going to be an unnatural entrance for a driver who's not used to it. Where I'm going with this is I'm headed towards asking them to somehow be sensitized that they're going to have to train their drivers, because this, you can't get there from here if you come in off of the exit that-
From himself and then-
Yeah, that comes off near the bridge.
Off Damon Road.
And that one, we have put, you mentioned flashing lights. We've just installed flashing lights there to try to keep them from turning left. So you won't have as much traffic as a, you know, bottling plant, for goodness sakes, but every, every commercial carrier that comes in there is going to have to be trained in some way, that they can only get in one way.
Yep, and that's definitely, you know, something that we've all talked about many, many times, and I know Coalvest was-
But you'd be long gone.
Yeah, I know, I will, right. So, you know, the other thing is, and this is totally up to Carly or operational, but if they came in on off-hours, which many times they do, they could easily do this, and turn around and come back. And that's something that might even be more easier for you to control than tell them, take this mapped route.
Yeah, I think it's going to take, it's going to take some time and some training, because the drivers aren't our employees, so it's some time and some training with them to direct them on the best route for them to come in.
Well, I mean, just to sort of, I mean, make you aware, but we've had pamphlets handed out at Coke, we've had their entrance way is designed so they can only go out one way. So, I mean, we've really tried to leverage the operator to help control the commercial traffic.
Yeah, we have a good relationship with a lot of our drivers, so it shouldn't be a problem. Our Nissan dealerships on Route Nine, which, you know, is also extremely busy, and we have trained them on the best route to take in, the best, they may drop off a lot of our cars, so they're not going to be stuck in it. So it's something that, you know, at the beginning, might take some getting used to for them, but I don't foresee a problem in the future.
And they do have full, you know, they can go around this, when we worked this out and designed it, we made sure the fire trucks have full access all the way around, and the car carriers can come in and cross here, and they can unload in the back and turn and come out, so that there's no, you know, off in the street unloading type of situations.
I just have a question about the calculation for the traffic mitigation. There was a zero for service vehicle drop-off. I would have thought service vehicles would have been coming in and out during peak hours, but it's NA.
No, the service drop-off, essentially, this could be an outdoor drop-off. The service write-up portion of it, where the customers come in and they do their transactions, that is accounted for, you know, that space is accounted for, and then some.
So service, meaning you want to take your car for service, not commercial-
That's what I mean. So service vehicle drop-off, I would have thought would have counted, there would have been a lot of service vehicles dropped off during peak hours, but it's a zero.
It's a driveway under a roof, essentially.
But we're not counting it as square footage, so we only do it based on square footage. So the reason it's zero is because it could be interior or exterior, and old models probably all had exterior drop, where you're actually outside and you leave your car, whereas now there's a transition to potentially you're pulling your car in, or it's a carport. Traffic mitigation is based on square footage of the building, and so this area is one of those gray areas where it's not-
Oh, it's not based on the actual calculation?
It's not the usability service-
From the IT, how many, how many? Oh, okay, that's where I was going-
Well, what they did was, we looked at this, and we were trying to look at the numbers, break them down, look at what the existing conditions were, how much, you know, 190,000 square feet, Morgan. And, you know, our, we lump in a bunch of uses in the same, with the same, and require the same mitigation for retail as well as, I mean, auto sales and that. So, you know, we looked at their numbers in terms of really how, what the uses are inside. It's not all 100% retail. So that's how we got it broken down into various, you know, there's office-
Art stores, service-
Right, right. So that's how we got to breaking it down into pieces, because it isn't entirely a retail function. So we just came up with zero in sort of the negotiation and looking at what made sense from the real use aspect.
Yeah, I thought it was, we didn't use the square footage as much as we used the ITES.
No, well, actually, the zoning now changed to say, instead of arguing over IT numbers, because, you know, they're not, that's not a surefire thing anyway. Their sample sizes are sometimes one for across the country, and they use that, and then you can't really, that's not an accurate number. So we've decided, instead of arguing over which bit in IT to use, the zoning has changed now to say, here's the number you use.
Square footage.
Devin?
No.
Not really. While it pains me to add 500 parking places, you know, I can see where the design has been responsive to all the things we have asked for. I mean, you know, it's like to me, as I start, you know.
I know it pains you, and I just want you to know that we've tried to really minimize, so we have double-stacked parking as opposed to having, you know what I mean, we've got double-stacked, triple-stacked, and we reduced the aisle width and the parking space size for only what they need in inventory areas, you know what I'm saying? So that we can really reduce the footprint as much as possible. And we have the full sizes and the full drive aisle widths for all the employee and emergency access and the customers and whatnot, but where it's solely inventory and you really don't need it, we cut it down.
Like I said, I just generally, I can't-
Do you have a problem?
I mean, I agree, I think.
Couldn't figure out what you meant.
Best, good, best.
And I'm really pleased with their treatment. That's a big improvement in that on that.
Traffic flows a little something. And it might be because, you know, if it down the line, the median is there, if it comes up King Street, it'll be more responsive. Outside, that's the only issue I have with the whole thing, and it's up to the owner to figure out how that's going to flow. The actual design and layout, I think, is exactly, almost, like I say, it looks like a graphic from the original.
Are there any members from the public that wish to speak on this? I don't think so. Any more questions for the applicant?
President, could you move to Con Street?
That hotel's going to go.
You're using your entryway.
It looks nicer.
There were some GW comments, but again, there were really even fewer than the previous permits reviewed, and really had to do with, you know, final review of drain lines and things like that, and connections. And I think, and then, I don't have any additional condition suggestions, other than the ones that were sent about recording the cross-easements before building permits and traffic mitigation, which they've committed to in their letter.
And Coalvest is well aware of that.
It was in their, it's a condition of their permit.
Right, so there's nothing, there's nothing, they can't say, oh, no, sorry, we changed our mind, that's not an option.
No, and that was, that was a condition of their permit, because they got to choose where the light went. They were first in the door, so.
On the Coalvest property, we've got granite curbs, and I think I remember reading that in this property, we're proposing by two minutes.
I think they were all granite along King Street.
No, in the entrance, where, in the city property, it's granite, and then it goes to precast concrete, because it's monolithic concrete sidewalk. to precast concrete because it's monolithic concrete sidewalk curve, so there is concrete. But the entryway is granite.
Does anybody have any concerns about the stormwater?
They got a permit.
They got a permit, okay. So there are any issues remaining on that?
The planning plan is slightly revised from what we have.
They did submit updated plans prior to this that didn't get sent to you. So you can certainly reference the latest updated plans.
I have one question about that. They've got two, this is just curiosity. You've got two belts that you're having to plant, one on either side of the sidewalk. And so what they've done is line up the trees so that you still have sightlines into the building. But I think I'm okay with that, but I mean, you could have staggered them so that they gave you a more filled in streetscape, but...
It doesn't, it's not stipulated in the zoning, so...
And they'll grow.
Most street trees are only one in line anyway.
Okay.
Good, I thought of that too. Okay, did we close the public hearing? I moved to close the public hearing.
Second? All in favor? Any discussion or would anyone like to make a motion?
I'll make a motion to approve the request by Kinsinzi Automotive Realty Limited Partnership for Major Project Site Plan to construct two buildings of 36,000 plus square feet total at 347 King Street, Northampton, MAP ID 18D 51.
Second?
Well, with the conditions.
With the conditions.
Including DPW conditions?
Including DPW conditions.
Second.
You didn't come up with a one?
All in favor? Thank you. Good luck.
We didn't come up with a one. I can't remember in my history not coming up with a one.
Congratulations.
What, which motion number is voting?
I can't remember not coming up with conditions. Added conditions.
We'd like to hear.
That meant you had already been there.
This is one of those rare meetings where all the members are here.
She can still make a motion.
One of the associates can substitute for the missing member, but the other one cannot vote.
Cannot vote, right. So we just discount that vote, right?
You just have to arbitrarily decide.
Right. How's taking it's way?
That's one of those things Carolyn does after the meeting. I just wanted to remind you.
When she just, you know, makes stuff up.
Oh, definitely.
Did you read the minutes?
Do we want to approve minutes?
No, we don't.
No, we don't want to approve the minutes because you didn't put me on someplace where I was, so we need to change.
Oh, you need to change them there?
Yeah, I was at that meeting and I'm not listed, although I'm...
I noted you. You know, I wonder if I, there was one...
It's because I went out and came back in because of, yeah, right.
All right. So do you know which date it is?
It was last June.
Okay.
She could, she could do like Mary Madeira does to me. I'm like, seven, you know? Mary, that's great for me.
Can you drop it tomorrow?
We have a motion to adjourn then?
Before we do that, so we have lots of zoning coming up or joint public hearings about zoning changes. You guys went over some zoning changes, like, unfortunately, tonight, but those will turn into ordinances that then will have to have public hearings. So I, the next set that's ready, that's been referred out by city council is, are the map changes for the Hampton Gardens in Hampshire Heights that you guys talked about a couple of weeks ago? And then changes to the cluster and PED ordinances? So David Murphy from ordinance committee requested the next joint public hearing be at their meeting, which is January 14th on a Monday. Can I get at least four of you there on the 14th?
Monday, what?
January 14th.
I wouldn't, you have to have been at the first one.
No, this is brand new.
Okay.
This is, yeah.
He gets paid for his time, we don't.
I could, what time, what time?
Six o'clock?
Yeah, I can be there.
I move we abolish joint hearings.
Well, we might have to with this, you know, crazy schedule of zoning changes. But right now, I've pitched, so one, two, anybody else for the 14th?
You want more of us there?
Yeah, I need at least four.
I'm pretty, let me get back to you, but I'm pretty sure I can.
And what, what time, six?
6:00 PM.
We'll send something out later.
Yeah.
Monday the 14th.
So I do you proud, Mark? Yeah.
Your B change to...
I started to rumor, that's where you are.
I didn't want to be rude enough to wait, but then again, looking at the time, I figured you, as much as anyone, would appreciate that.
A regular...
Yes, yeah, it's the after our first meeting, in between the meetings.
16.
It's private, it's like private.
It's not...
You can't recycle this.
I'm going to use the...
Oh, well.
Change?
Oh, so it might be...
You can park.
No, I'm going to the 72.
Like in the, I mean, some of these spots now that say you can't park.
Oh, the...
I wouldn't park in the building inspector.
Yeah, but these like, but these like right here.
Good job, Chad. Oh, thank you. And sometimes it's...